Would you like to start the tonight's March twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen meeting of the planning board? Call to order please. Roll call.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Dufelia.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Here.
Chairman Good.
Here.
Mr. Meehan. Mr. Siano.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here. Oh, is this the flag?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey buddy.
Hey.
Dump me out.
Amy, would you like to? Call Mr. Weinstein, make sure he's present on the list please.
Here.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coaster. And filed in the office of the township clerk on July twenty fifth, two thousand and eighteen. There is an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. We do have a no smoking policy. And the board policy is as follows. No new cases will be started after ten thirty P M. And no new testimony will be taken after eleven P M. In addition, the applicant is limited to one hour of testimony. But in this particular case, since we have only one applicant here tonight. We're going to start with that applicant after we do a little paperwork before and the meeting will conclude tonight at ten o'clock. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's Community Cable Channel. Twenty-two on Verizon FiOS and channel seventy-seven on cable. All cell phones must be turned off, or if you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. Now we have minutes for approval from February twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting. Somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second. Wired up.
Mr. Fadano.
Yes.
Dr. Benadeno.
Yes.
Mr. Dufelia.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Close.
Yes.
Mr. Siano.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Veroli.
Yes. Next, we have two resolution memorializations. The first one is deal development. Block thirty-four, lot three point zero two, eight oh seven Deal Road, Ocean. Preliminary and final site plan approval. Would somebody please make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Jarrah.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Benadeno.
Yes.
Mr. Dufelia.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Close.
Yes.
Mr. Siano.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have a resolution memorialization for McDonald's Corporation, block thirty-four, lots twenty-three. Two thousand State Highway thirty-five, Ocean, New Jersey, preliminary and final site plan approval. Somebody please make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Jarrah.
I can't vote. That's why. That's why you guys beat me.
Hi. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Next, we have case number one, Mamano, block thirty-three.
Trade?
Point one four, lot two, seven-ten West Park Avenue, Ocean. This case has been carried till April fifteenth of two thousand and nineteen. Next, we have a minor site plan subcommittee to be voted on. This is number two on your list. It's Seaview Acquisition LLC. Block one forty-one, lot one, lot two, and lot twenty-three, two-three oh one, Route sixty-six, Ocean, New Jersey, Zone C dash seventy-four. Would somebody please make a motion?
A motion.
Motion approved. So.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, okay. Um.
I'll second. Second.
Yes.
Okay, so we, uh, Mr. Siano, Siano and myself will be voting on that. Make the roll call please.
That's Mamano. Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, and next we have the. Roll call again please.
I will not be voting.
Yes.
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 Mr. Close?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So we, all right, we have just voted in favor of the application for Seaview Acquisition. Next, we have the carried case, case of the evening, number three, Deal Thirty-Five Land LLC. Block thirty-three, lot nineteen point zero one, sixteen oh three State Highway thirty-five, Ocean, New Jersey, Zone C dash seven.
While the applicant is setting up, Mr. Kirk has asked me to clarify some procedural rules for everybody in the public and also for the applicant. So at one of the prior meetings, there were some questions raised and Ms. Krimko had pointed out that documentation should be presented at the appropriate time when the objectors are presenting their case. As a result of that, there was an effort taken to deliver some documents. Unfortunately, it was delivered to my office. And Mr. Kirk wants to emphasize to those in the audience, because the applicant already knows this, that all documents that are filed, must be filed only with Mr. Kirk's office. If it's filed with anybody else, it's just not effective. But I, I can advise that the documents that were delivered to my office have been handed to Mr. Kirk. And Ms. Krimko, if you wish, you can examine those documents and if you want more details, I just want to be generic about it for, you know, purposes now. Also, there was another question, a procedure raised that I, I think is of importance. One question was whether or not folks can contact board members. And the definitive answer is no. And not only for the benefit of this application, which certainly has public interest, but for, for those who just wouldn't be aware of this. The board members up here serve you as volunteers. And a good analogy that was brought up at the meeting the other day was, the board members here are acting in a quasi judicial role. Whether or not you want to analogize to them being judges or jurors is not really the technical point. They, they have the obligation on behalf of the public to listen to what is presented at these hearings. So it would be improper for anybody, and that goes for the applicant's attorney, or an attorney for an applicant, or any member of the public, to, to discuss this case at all with the board members. Because even if you did so innocently, that could have an adverse impact on your position. And if an attorney did that, that could actually result in an ethics violation being charged. So, uh, thank you for adhering to that. And again, I'll thank the board members for their continued service and, and for them to continue to listen to all points of view and to make a decision at the end of the hearing. Mr. Kirk, were there any other announcements you think should be made?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, we can proceed with the meeting at this point. Ms. Krimko?
Okay, and Jennifer, Jennifer Krimko, on behalf of the applicant, and I'm going to assume then that since this wasn't formally submitted and it's what you were referencing generally by the Sharps, that it hasn't been given to the board and it, it's not part of the record?
Yes, that's correct.
And the engineer has one piece of the correspondence.
Wait, wait, hold it there. You have to be recognized by the chair.
Okay, Mrs. Sharp, have a comment to make about that?
I have an, I have an objection. The public portion is not open. The applicant has not completed their presentation. It's not appropriate for the public to be able to comment.
I'm going to sustain Ms. Krimko's objection because I believe the document was not properly handed off to the director of the Community Affairs Office here. Ms., our attorney just handed it off to him recently, so we can discuss this, I guess, when we get to public commentary.
Yeah, everything is fine, so.
No, and I would just like to.
It's now been received properly and again, anybody in the public can, can go down and take a look at the documents that are put in file, not just by the applicant, but in this particular case, a set of documents are now part of the record. And Ms. Krimko, would you agree with that in procedure? Okay?
Very good.
Mrs. Sharp, I know she's going to object, so can we just wait for the, till the end?
Does that mean that other members of the public can submit documents to Mr. Kirk?
I have to, again.
All I want to do is ask a question, and as the public.
And that question should be asked to Mr. Kirk, not part of the public hearing.
I disagree. I think you guys are all up there and lady, as public servant.
Sandy, again, the public portion is not open. The Mr. Sharp does not have the floor.
We'd like to start the proceeding, Mr. Sharp. And you will be given an opportunity to ask that question. I can answer that question. But I will tell you, you'll have an opportunity to be heard. I know it's a very brief question, and I appreciate that fact. So you will be the first to be. And I would like Ms. Krimko to proceed with her witness.
Thank you. And as the board members know, we completed it. Oh, Mr. Duffy, I'm sorry, I might have been out of the room. Did you certify, sign a certification that you?
Oh, it was a joy, let me tell you.
You're welcome. Um, thank you. So everybody who's up there is eligible, participate, should we get to a vote tonight. Um, so we left off with our site engineer at the last meeting. The public portion was closed as to his testimony. And tonight I have with me Daniel Disario. He's a professional traffic engineer from Langin Engineering. He will be testifying with regard to two items that I had moved in at the original hearing for identification purposes, and he will substantiate them tonight. The first is A-ten, which is his May twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen Traffic Impact Study. And A-eleven, which is his follow-up, February fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, uh, traffic review comments in response to Bill Fitzgerald's report. So with that, I'd like to have Mr. Disario sworn.
Yes, I do. Get your full name for the record.
Certainly Dan. Last name is D-I-S-A-R-I-O.
All right, and Dan, although you've testified numerous times before this board and boards throughout the state, for the benefit of the public, who may not be familiar with your credentials, just take a moment and qualify yourself as a traffic engineer.
Certainly, I have a bachelor's science in civil engineering from Temple University. I also have a master's in science in transportation engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as several other states. Um, I'm also a certified pra-, uh, professional traffic operations engineer, which is by exam. And I've been qualified and accepted as an expert in the field of traffic engineering before hundreds of boards throughout New Jersey. And Mr. Chairman, just in, for full disclosure, I was also the original traffic engineer for the previous failed application for this piece of property.
Very much.
So. So Dan, with that, you're obviously intimately familiar with the history of this property, as well as the development of the project as it exists. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the area, and why don't you take a moment in lay terms, uh, for the benefit of the public? Explain to them what studies you've done to come to the conclusions, and then share your conclusions based on this proposed development.
Certainly, as you indicated, uh, at the opening, we've prepared a document entitled Traffic Impact Study. Last revised, May twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. That accompanied this site plan application, and that sets forth in detail, uh, the traffic aspects of this proposal that's before you as it relates to impacts along the adjacent roadways. Subsequent to that study, we prepared what's entitled Response to Traffic Review Comments. That was a additional document that we prepared in response to review comments that were traffic-related as prepared by your board engineer. And that document was dated February thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and that is known for identification purposes as Exhibit A-dash-eleven. So with that, and I'd be happy to answer any detailed questions that you may have with either of those documents. But I think, given the quite lengthy testimony from the site engineer, I'm not going to really touch on the aspects of the onsite circulation or parking supply or access points, because that, I think, was testified to at great length by the site engineer. I would submit to you that we do have a pending application with the DOT. The DOT did issue their second round of review comments last week. And I can submit to you that, as it relates to the traffic study, which Exhibit A-ten was also submitted to the DOT. The only substantive comment the DOT had as it relates to that traffic study was that for one of the movements that we analyzed, right turns on red are allowed at the Route thirty-five and Deal Road intersection in the westbound direction, and we did not account for any right turns on red in our analysis.
And Dan, while you're talking about discussions with the DOT, I, part of the ordinance, and this was raised at the initial hearing and in Jim's review letter, part of the ordinance requires us to put the far side jug handle and attempt to put a slip road. Now, I had stipulated that we met with the DOT a long time ago, with members of the, I think the mayor was there and the towns engineer, if I'm not mistaken, or maybe Marty Arbiss. And, um, we proposed the slip road, and if you could explain to the board why the ultimate submission does not include the slip road?
At that meeting, the DOT discussed with us what exactly was the right turn volume in the westbound direction along Deal Road. So people coming westbound on Deal, making a right turn onto Route thirty-five to head northbound. Uh, that volume is not that high. And with that, the DOT said a slip ramp is not warranted. They basically took the position, why should we build additional infrastructure to maintain in terms of the state maintaining it, if it's really not warranted in terms of the actual right turn volume that it would serve?
And additionally, Dan, there was an issue with regard to the spacing between Deal Road, the site driveway, and the slip road. If I remember correctly, there was, um, it, 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 it didn't work within the confines of their regulations.
That is correct, and DOT always looks to minimize the amount of conflict points along their highways. And given the fact that the.
Conflict points just mean access points.
Right, can be street intersections, could be driveways, could be jug handles. In this case, the proposed far side jug handle is a, another conflict point. And given the proposal in terms of the driveways proposed along Route thirty-five that serve this development, the location of the Deal Road intersection, the proposed far side jug handle, the DOT determined that the slip ramp, because it's not warranted by volume, wouldn't make sense to put in in addition, because it's just another additional conflict point where one is not really warranted to have.
And you were unequivocally told by the DOT that it would not be permitted, and any application proposing it would not be approved.
That is correct, and we subsequently removed that slip ramp from all future drawings, both as part of the site plan application, as well as the continuing application before DOT.
Okay, so now, moving on to your traffic study, and, and I know that, you know, you're not going to go into the, to the explicit detail in the, you know, twenty some odd pages that you've written, but I would like you to take a moment and really summarize how you studied it and what you found.
So, as I indicated earlier, I've been involved with this site for quite a long time. I was, again, the original traffic engineer for the previous application on this piece of property. I would be lying to you if I told you at that time I did have a full head of hair. Jen and I are kind of in disagreement as to whether I did have a full head of hair at that time or not. She says no, I say yes, but regardless, it's been that long. And I understand what everyone endures in this room in the summertime. I get it. I know there's a lot of traffic in this area. I know the good people that have come out behind me have a lot to endure during the warm months, particularly on Friday nights and Saturdays. I understand it. I've seen it. I remember seeing traffic backed up on Deal Road, westbound direction, all the way to Whale Pond. I remember seeing traffic backed up in the eastbound direction, almost to Poplar, not past Poplar, but pretty much to Poplar. I get it. I can tell you, you're not unique in terms of what you have to endure living at the shore. And if we could afford it, me and my wife would live at the shore, because she loves being at the beach. And she would love to live in your town. But she would understand, as would I, we would have to endure those kinds of conditions in the summer, because that's basically what you need to endure when you live in this area. But you're not unique. Thirty-three, sixty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-five. All eight have to endure and exhibit similar constrained traffic operations in the summer. I will tell you, I do work all over the state. That same time you're enduring traffic, people on Route seventeen up through Bergen County are deal, are dealing with the same issues you have. But people aren't going to the shore there. They're going up to the Catskills. Two eighty-seven and Route seventy-eight, that interchange in the middle of the state. People heading west out to the Poconos. People are dealing with the same issues that you are at the shore. In the summer, those people are going out to the Poconos. So you're not unique, and I get it. I completely understand you have a lot of traffic that you deal with in the summer. But by the same token, during the non-summertimes, take for instance tonight, traffic along Deal Road works fairly well. The intersection of the thirty-five and Deal Road works fairly well. So with that, as it relates to this proposed development, I think one of the unique things that this development has is it's a mixed-use development. And if you start to peel away the different land uses, from a traffic perspective, this development taken in totality is not going to generate as much traffic as if these individual uses were developed on separate pieces of par, uh, properties along Route thirty-five, and I'll take you through it. A convenience store with gas is proposed. Quick-serve restaurant. About fifteen thousand square feet of retail, and when I say that, it includes the retail building and the two restaurants that are pro, proposed towards the Deal Road side of the development. You have a hundred and fourteen-room hotel and seventy townhomes. Now, the convenience store with gas is going to rely mostly on the traffic that's already on Deal Road and Route thirty-five. It's going to draw most of its business from that existing traffic. That's known as pass-by traffic in the retail industry, because it draws some of its business from traffic that's already passing by a particular site. The convenience store with gas is going to draw anywhere from fifty to seventy-five percent of its business from traffic that's already on thirty-five and Deal Road today. So from a land use perspective and a traffic impact perspective, that's a very advantageous land use, because it really doesn't generate that much new traffic to an area. And it won't to this area. Quick-serve restaurant, I can tell you, tonight I ate at the Wendy's on thirty-five in the Foodtown Shopping Center. I was coming south. I went in there to get dinner. I continued south and then came back to coming here this evening. I was a pass-by trip to that Wendy's. Their proposed quick-serve restaurant, about fifty percent of its activity is going to be pass-by traffic. The retail building and the other two restaurants, you can expect about twenty to thirty percent of its traffic to be pass-by traffic. The hotel and the townhomes will not have any pass-by traffic. The traffic that those two individual uses will generate will be new traffic to the area. It doesn't exist now, but it will in the future. And just to give you some context, seventy townhomes is the equivalent of about the number of homes that are along Dwight Drive. Now, I know in the summer, Dwight Drive gets a lot of cut-through traffic between Logan and Deal. I understand that. But you go out to Dwight Drive tonight, I think you would characterize that neighborhood, and the traffic along Dwight Drive is relatively low. And that's about the equivalent of the seventy townhomes that are proposed before you this evening. Having this mix of uses all on one site, there's going to be an interaction internally between the different uses. Some of the residents in the townhomes may go to some of the restaurants. Some of the residents in the townhomes may go to the convenience store with gas. Some of the hotel patrons may go to some of the restaurants, or the retail, or the convenience store with gas. So you will get an interaction internally between these various uses. That's called internal trips, and that internal trip making doesn't create any trips on the adjacent street system. It's all internal to the site. If you were to build these uses on individual properties along Route thirty-five, somebody that wanted to get gas at the convenience store with gas would have to go to that particular site, get their gas, and then drive along thirty-five to the next site if they wanted to go to a restaurant. Having this all on one site and these different uses, you will see internal trip making, which will reduce the external traffic impact of the proposal before you. About twenty-five percent of the traffic for the entire development will be internal to that development, with absolutely no impact on the external roads as it relates to internal trips.
Just to clarify, Dan, when you, when you use that twenty-five percent, what you're saying is, is once they're on-site, they're going to go from use to use as opposed to leaving the site?
That is correct.
Okay.
So estimating how much traffic will be generated by this development, we looked at published trip rates that the Institute of Transportation Engineer publishes in their manual called Trip Generation Manual. Applying all the pass-by traffic percentages and accounting for the internal traffic that will occur between the various land uses, we've arrived at what the net new traffic that will be generated by this development will be to the external roadway system along Route thirty-five and Deal Road. So during a weekday morning peak hour, so one hour between seven to nine in the morning, we expect that this development will generate in round numbers about a hundred and thirty vehicles coming into the site and a hundred and thirty vehicles exiting the site that would be new to the area. That's new traffic to the area. That's not all the traffic turning in and out of the site. That's only new traffic to the area that doesn't exist today, after you account for pass-by and internal trip making. Similarly, during the weekday evening peak hour, new traffic to the area would be a hundred and twenty-five vehicles coming into the site and a hundred and twenty-five vehicles exiting the site. And that would be one hour between s, uh, four to six in the evening during a weekday.
And just, Dan, and just to take a moment, because the public may not be aware, when you say the peak hour, you study a, a range of hours from, let's say, like you said, from four to six, and then you pick that one hour within that timeframe that traffic was the heaviest. And that's what the peak hour means. So on a Tuesday, the peak hour might be four forty-five to five forty-five, or on a Wednesday, it might be. Or on a Wednesday, it might be five oh two to six oh two.
Could we clarify that a little bit cuz I I I think that there's two peak hours that that people may wanna hear about. One's the peak hour of the street system. The other one's the peak hour of the generator. And if they coincide, it's different impacts than if they don't coincide or.
So when you're talking about the peak hour, you're talking about our use peak hour or the street peak hour?
So the way this study typically is done and the way we've done uh as part of this application. Is we've identified the traffic that would be generated in the highest hour. Between seven and nine in the morning, four to six in the afternoon and eleven to two on a Saturday. The published trip rates and applying the pass by percentages and the internal trip percentages. We separately did traffic counts at Deal and thirty five Logan and Deal. And from those traffic counts. We did them from seven and nine in the morning, four to six in the afternoon and eleven to two on a Saturday. And based on those traffic counts, we identified when traffic volumes were at their highest hour. For seven and nine in the morning, four to six in the afternoon on a weekday and then eleven to two on a Saturday. And we assumed that developments generation and the street peak hour would be the same. So we've basically conducted a conservative analysis by assuming everything is peaking at the same time. We've also done. An analysis based on summertime conditions when we did traffic counts in August. At the request of your engineer, we also did additional counts during non-summertime. Uh in January of this year. So we've looked at a peak of the peak in terms of August during the summer. And assessed impacts. Based on that condition and we also did a non-summer analysis and assessed impacts uh based on that condition as well. Just continuing on a Saturday. During a peak hour between eleven to two on a Saturday, the development would generate an additional two hundred vehicles coming in and two hundred vehicles going out. And those vehicles do not exist today, so it's new traffic to the area. Looking at how traffic would be distributed. In terms of how it would arrive and depart from the site. Again, round numbers about thirty percent tuned from the north along Route thirty five, about thirty percent tuned from the south along Route thirty five. And about twenty percent tuned from the east as well as two and from the west along Deal Road. So it's about a thirty thirty split north and south. And a twenty percent split east and west. And that's based on the existing travel patterns that we identified from the traffic counts. If you take the new traffic that we've estimated. And you apply that distribution that we've identified based on the existing travel patterns from the traffic counts. What you're looking at in terms of additional traffic along thirty five and Deal Road is as follows. Along Deal Road, on average, about one additional vehicle. Every one to two minutes. In each direction. So westbound along Deal Road from Monmouth to the site. You're looking about one additional vehicle every one to two minutes during peak hours. That would be the same going in the eastbound direction from the site towards Monmouth. Same thing on the west side of thirty five, about one additional vehicle on average. In each direction. Every one to two minutes. Along Route thirty, excuse me, along Route thirty five. It would on average amount to one additional vehicle every minute. During those peak hours. So heading from the site. Heading north on Route thirty five, one additional vehicle every minute. Coming from the north, heading south towards the site, one additional vehicle every minute. Same thing to and from the south. So when you start to break it down in terms of the order of magnitude of the additional traffic to the area. That we've identified. I would respectfully submit to you. That that additional amount of traffic attributed to this site. Is not significant. If we were to sit here for one to two minutes quietly quietly. In that time, there would be one additional vehicle on Deal Road in both directions on both sides of thirty five. That would be attributed to this site. And the development that's proposed.
Now Dan, let me ask a question. So. If the one to two vehicle, if the one vehicle per one to two minutes was put on an empty road. It would have, you wouldn't feel that at all. So let's talk about you did your traffic studies as to the existing traffic. What will this one vehicle every one to two minutes do to the capacity of these roads and their ability to continue to function?
It will have a nominal difference in terms of operations and when I say nominal. If you were to go out and observe traffic today along Route thirty five and Deal Road. And if the board was inclined to grant approval and the development was constructed and you went back out in the future. And again, observe traffic operations of both along thirty five and Deal. I would respectfully submit to you, you would not be able to perceive a noticeable difference either in traffic volume. Or traffic operations because of this development. And. The reason why I say that to you is because. The uses that have been selected by the applicant. A lot of them are drawing from existing traffic that's already out there, so it won't add new traffic to the area to any significant degree. And because it's a mixed use development. You have the internal trip making which again reduces the external traffic impact of this development that's before you. Again, DOT has reviewed our traffic study uh that was submitted as part of the site site plan application as well as the DOT application. Um and essentially has approved it uh as submitted. There are improvements that are proposed as part of this development application. As Jen has said. One aspect of that um proposal is set forth by your ordinance. And that is a far side jug handle. As you're coming northbound today on Route thirty five, if you wanna go westbound. On Deal Road. You have to come up thirty five northbound, get off on what's known as a near side jug handle, so before the Deal Road intersection. And you have to wait at the end of that near side jug handle and make a left onto Deal Road. And presumably most people stay in that left lane once they make that left turn. Which accommodates both left turns. People that wanna go uh westbound Deal Road and make a left turn onto thirty five. As well as people that wanna go uh along Deal Road and continue straight across the intersection. What the proposed far side junk handle will do is it will eliminate. Having somebody. Come down that near side jug handle and then have to make a left into the traffic flow along Deal Road. Instead. With the far side jug handle, you'll come up Route thirty five, go through the signalized intersection with Deal Road. Take the far side jug handle. And then come to the end of that far side jug handle and then come across into the through lane to continue. Uh through the intersection to head westbound. The near side jug handle as part of uh that improvement will be converted to only allow a right turn. Onto Deal Road to head eastbound. So that is. A component of the improvements that are proposed as part of this development application. In addition.
Well, before you go in addition, so in your opinion, as a traffic expert. Is that going to help with the flow of traffic and is it going to add to the safety of maneuverability in the intersection?
It is and I was gonna go on and to give you a total picture, but we'll we'll break it down one by one. So I'm sure pretty confident everybody in this room has gone through that intersection. And. I will liken it to the existing. Configuration at that intersection, particularly as it relates to that northbound near side jug handle. Creates a lot of friction. Now what do I mean by friction? There's a few things. I have seen people come down that near side jug handle. The inside lane on westbound Deal Road, so the one that's next to the double yellow line heading westbound. Is pretty much full. With either people wanting to make a left onto Route thirty five to head south. Or people that wanna come across and continue west along Deal Road. So what happens? Oftentimes, somebody will come out of near side jug handle. There's not a lot of room, so now they're basically halfway through their turn and they're stopped. So half the car is hanging out. Blocking the eastbound side of Deal Road. Or. They'll swing out really wide, try to get around the standing uh queue of cars in that lane. And get over to the lane that's next to the curb on the westbound side. And use that lane to head west through the intersection. Both of those scenarios are not ideal. And they create friction at the intersection when people are doing that. Now. I've also seen because of that configuration. People will come out of the near side jug handle, get into the lane next to the W L double yellow line to head west. And they're gonna come through the intersection from that lane. Well, what happens when they come through that intersection is they immediately now have to merge back. Over in front of the Wells Fargo bank. Because those two westbound lanes merge down into one lane very quickly once you get past the Route thirty five intersection. And in doing so, then merging back, it creates more friction, especially when traffic volumes are high in the summer. I've seen and I've heard a lot of people honking horns. Because of that merge that happens and what happens is with that merging that's occurring. It spills back through the intersection and prevents. Cars from making it through the light. Because of the friction that's happening in front of the bank. I've also seen. Cars come off the near side jug handle that wanna go through the intersection. And they get hung up on somebody. That didn't make the green arrow that wants to make a left onto thirty five. So now you have somebody that oftentimes it's more than one car. But you'll have somebody waiting now to make the left turn onto thirty five cuz they missed the green arrow. So they have to wait. And somebody that wants to go through that stuck behind them is now trying to cut over. Out of that lane into the other lane so that they can get around the one that's waiting to make a left turn at the intersection.
How are we fixing it?
That creates friction. So. When you look at all of that. It really amounts to. A less than ideal operation, not only from an operations perspective, but from a safety perspective and I'll just. Leave you with one other thing in terms of friction. If somebody wants to make a right turn onto thirty five north, they have to be in the curb lane, so the lane next to the curb on the north side. Of Deal Road heading westbound. The radius at the corner is not that big. So if you wanna make a right turn onto thirty five, you have to slow down in order to make that turn comfortably. By virtue of that right turn movement slowing down, again, it's creating friction and impacting the ability for people that wanna get. Through the intersection from doing that. So. In totality, it's not an ideal situation. So what we're doing is a few things. The far side jug handle. Is one aspect. Putting in the far side jug handle, you won't have people cutting into. The traffic flow on Deal Road from the near side jug handle anymore. It won't be a left turn maneuver. To get through. When you're heading northbound. You won't have to take the near side and make a left turn anymore. You'll go through the intersection. At the signal and then you'll come around to a far side jug handle. With a simple maneuver to come over and merge into the lane that'll take you through the intersection. So that's one aspect. In addition, we're also proposing to widen Deal Road in the westbound direction to provide a right turn lane. At the intersection. An exclusive right turn lane. And that widening, we're actually carrying down to almost the Logan Road intersection. So when you're coming westbound on Deal Road and you go through the Logan Road intersection. You will have the ability to get into an additional lane on the right hand side, so along the curb lane. And you could take that additional lane all the way up to the intersection Route thirty five and make a right turn onto Route thirty five northbound. Unimpeded.
So it'll effectively act like the slip road.
Correct.
It just won't be through the site, it'll be on Deal Road.
Correct. So anybody at the intersection that wants to make a right turn, they will now have their own dedicated lane. So anyone that wants to proceed through the intersection will not be impacted by people that are making a right turn at the intersection. Anymore because they'll have their separate lane. We're also proposing because of the far side jug handle. Converting. The existing lane that's next to the double yellow line today heading in the westbound direction. Right now you can make a left turn or go through. So that's called a shared left turn through lane. We're proposing to change that to an exclusive left turn lane. In the future, so. If you're inclined to. Grant approval and this is built. When you're heading westbound on Deal Road in the future. And you come up to the thirty five intersection, you will have three lanes, an exclusive left turn lane, an exclusive through lane. And an exclusive right turn lane. Now with that configuration. The merging. That has to occur today because of the. Near side jug handle and people using that lane next to the W L yellow coming through the intersection having to come back. That will be eliminated with the far side jug handle. And everyone that wants to go through the intersection will be. Basically organized into that center through lane. In advance of the Route thirty five intersection. So you will not have any merging occurring after the intersection anymore with the improvements that are proposed.
Are you one of that bottleneck that you get now where it's funneling into that one small area?
Correct, and there should be a lot less horn blowing and a lot less aggravation by motorists in front of the Wells Fargo. That have to endure that merge that occurs currently.
Now Dan, what about the potential friction or conflict for that now happening on the east side? Of Route thirty five as everybody jockeys for their lanes or. I- is that part of the reason why we widened it all the way back to Logan Road to give the drivers the opportunity to find their appropriate lane?
So. In the westbound direction. As people are coming through the Logan Road intersection. By us carrying that widening all the way down to just. West of the Logan Road intersection as people are coming through that light. They'll have the ability if they're in the curb lane and they realize. They're not gonna make a right turn at Route thirty five, they will have the ability to merge over a great length. To get into the center through lane to proceed through the Route thirty five intersection. So we're kinda taking. Away the merging that happens after the intersection today. And providing the ability for that merging to occur well in advance of the Route thirty five intersection in the future with the improvements that are proposed.
Now Dan, if someone's heading north on Highway thirty five and uses our far side jug handle. And it leaves them heading in the westerly direction. But they actually wanna go south on Route thirty five. Is the placement of our outlet, for lack of a better word, of our. Far side jug handle on Deal Road. Far east enough for these cars to be able to cut across to be able to get into that left turn lane.
Yes, it is and that's one of the things that DOT has reviewed as part of the application that is before them. But I will tell you. The amount of U-turning traffic, so that would be a U-turn basically. Somebody coming up Route thirty five northbound. That wants to use the Deal Road intersection to basically turn around and go back south. That's. What that movement is, so it's a northbound U-turn essentially. If you look at. The development that's between Alair and Deal. That would generate. A U-turn maneuver, there's not a lot of development between Alair and Deal.
Let me just interrupt you and ask a question cuz I had trouble understanding this when you first explained it to me. The reason why that's important is because anybody who wanted to heads, anyone who was south of Alair. Heading north, who wanted to head south on Route thirty five would make that U-turn at the Alair U-turn, correct?
Correct. I mean, I certainly would and I I I think everyone in the room would if.
So the only people who would be using that far side jug handle for the purpose of making a U-turn. To head south on thirty five would be traffic generating. North of the Alair.
Correct.
And north of the Alair. And north of the Alair is what, an office building and a single family home?
Correct.
And taking into consideration, there might be one, two, three people, however the number is. Who might have missed the Alair turn, what your s- testimony is, is that it's not a significant enough number to have any impact.
Correct, and again, the far side jug handle has been located where somebody can make a U-turn using that far side jug handle. I'm just trying to quantify it in terms of that U-turn maneuver is not gonna amount to anything significant. Because there's really nothing to generate U-turn movements.
Now i- if there was a lot of development in between Alair and Deal Road heading northbound, that might be different, correct?
Yes. Oh, and I will leave you with this in terms of the improvements that are proposed, so. Right now, when you're coming eastbound on Deal Road and you wanna go north on Route thirty-five. You have to take a far side jug handle, so you come across Route thirty-five. Take a far side jug handle and then you proceed onto Route thirty-five to head northbound. That acceleration lane, um don't quote me, it's probably in the order of four hundred to five hundred feet. As part of this application, we're proposing to extend. That acceleration lane length across our site frontage um by another on the order of about four hundred feet. So in the end. If you wanted to come eastbound on Deal and head north on Route thirty-five. You take that far side jug handle and you'll have on the order of about nine hundred feet with which. You can accelerate and then merge over to continue uh north on thirty-five.
So to put it in practical points, if I'm heading northbound on thirty-five. And I'm approaching Deal Road and I'm in the in the right lane. On the easterly lane. What would happen as I crossed through that light, a lot of cars would be trying to cut in. That are coming off the far side jug handle because there's a limited area with which they can get in and merge in time. Before the merge lane is gone.
Correct.
And what you're saying is that merge lane is going to be extended. So there'll be less of an urgency for that merge and it'll happen more smoothly and it'll have less of an impact on the. Not only the cars trying to merge, but also those existing cars on Route thirty-five heading north.
That is correct. And and with that, um I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Sure.
As I understand it, there are two um entrances on Deal Road.
Yes.
And I'm not clear, are they, if people are exiting this complex. And trying to take a left onto Deal Road to go east. Did you um review the difficulty of that?
Uh and I'm glad you raised that cuz that was something um that I neglected to testify to in terms of improvements. So you are correct, there are two access points along Deal Road that are proposed. One is limited to right in, right out, and that's closer to the thirty-five intersection. And the other one is a connection to the existing Logan Road intersection. So right now, Logan Road is a T-intersection controlled by a traffic signal. As part of this development proposal, and excuse me, Wendy's is repeating on me right now. We are proposing to connect the site. With a fourth leg to that intersection, so right now it's a T and in the future it'll be a four-leg intersection.
But then I think the question she was asking, coming out of our site onto Deal Road. The only location you can make a left turn is at a light.
Correct.
You can't make the left turn from any other exit, we're trying to get the the site plan up.
So you can't take a left coming out of this complex.
Other than at Logan Road.
Other than at the Logan.
At the signal.
And that would be the far east entrance and that will be at a light as of Logan Road.
Correct, now as part of that connection to Logan Road. We're also proposing as part of the widening along Deal Road. To create a eastbound left turn lane at the Logan Road intersection. So right now, when you're coming westbound, there's a left turn lane. And a through lane at the Logan Road intersection. In the future, when you're coming eastbound. There's going to be a left turn lane to take you into this development. And then there'll be the through lane that exists today and then there's a exclusive right turn lane that takes you on to Logan Road.
And the purpose of this is so there won't be any cars heading eastbound trying to make a left into our site, holding up traffic heading eastbound.
Correct, but there's also an advantage to that connection. As you heard from the site engineer in previous testimony. There that connection to the development opposite Logan Road, there's also going to be a connection into the library site. In the future, and I will tell you, and she gets mad at me when I do this, but I tell her I I use her as an example all the time in testimony for. Applications cuz it's it's practical. My wife doesn't like to make left turns, particularly when there aren't traffic signals, so in the future. You will not have to rely on making a left turn into the library site at the existing library driveway on Deal Road. That'll still be available, but you'll have the option to make a left turn at the Logan Road intersection into our development. And then make a right turn into the library site. In addition, coming out of the library site, you'll have the option to make a left turn directly onto Deal Road. Or to use the interconnection to our development to come out to the Logan Road intersection. At the light and make a left turn onto Deal Road at the light.
So you're not forced to wait and cut into traffic, you would be at the light.
Correct, so now the library is also going to benefit from having signalized access. By virtue of this proposed development, where the library doesn't have any signalized access currently. You're welcome.
Uh the, how much are you widening thirty-five where the jug?
In terms of uh a width?
There there additional lanes being added to thirty-five?
There aren't additional lanes being added to thirty-five in in the sense of adding lanes, so we're going to extend. The existing lane that comes off the eastbound Deal Road jug handle to come on to Route thirty-five northbound. The length of that lane is gonna be extended another four or five hundred feet from what it is today.
So the people going to that are accelerating from the wood gun jug handle are gonna be. Possibly running into the people that are getting to the next jug handle. Is there any separation there?
There is separation, now I will tell you that is a very good question. The jug handle that's proposed in terms of the far side jug handle and the existing jug handle for eastbound. That is basically a typical classic New Jersey jug handle intersection design. Where you have jug handles in different quadrants um separated on either side of the the minor road. But you have to look at how the signal operates.
I I just, I didn't understand your question, if I could just ask, so you're talking about a conflict between. Those people getting onto Route thirty-five, coming off of Deal Road. East.
East, you're taking.
Correct, to get on north.
Jug handle, you wanna go north on thirty-five.
Okay, you're you're talking about a conflict between them and those that are getting onto the far side jug handle who wanna go west.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to understand.
And and I.
Or get into the site.
Yep, and I understood your question. The way it works with the traffic signal.
Maybe my mic is not working. How about now, better?
I I I can hear you, yes.
Okay.
Having the traffic light and the way it operates. You're not often going to have people coming around the eastbound jug handle to head north. And people heading north trying to get into uh the northbound far side jug handle that's proposed at the same time.
And that's based on the timing of the signals and that's all computerized and taken into consideration by the DOT.
Correct.
I I don't know, I just I I I just don't see it, I don't I don't see what you're seeing. I just know when I accelerate from that area going north on thirty-five. There are gonna be cars cutting over to get either on that jug handle or into your site. And I just don't see how you're gonna do both unless you add another lane, I just don't see it.
I will tell you, if you were to add another lane, you would make it worse. Because now people have to get over even further to get into the jug handle or the proposed site access points along thirty-five. The way the signal works, when you ha- if you're coming. If you're coming eastbound.
Right.
You get into that jug handle, while you're getting into that jug handle, the light is red to thirty-five.
Correct.
Once the light turns green.
Right.
Now people are starting to go, the jug handle empties out. You don't have people on thirty-five zipping up thirty-five while people are coming around the jug handle trying to merge. Because everything is stopped to thirty-five north.
I don't, I don't, again, I don't agree with you, I disagree totally, I I just don't see that.
What is the distance on that acceleration lane to the entrance of the site on thirty-five? I mean, is it approximately, is it tight?
It's several hundred feet to the first driveway that's proposed for the site.
Safe distance?
Yes.
For somebody accelerating and then you have somebody that's normally coming up thirty-five. Not messing with any of the jug handles, but coming up thirty-five and wanna take a right into the site.
Yes, it is a safe distance and it's completely conforming and compliant with DOT's. Highway access management standards for driveway locations.
And Dan, that's what I was going to ask you, um with regard to the safety of the jug handles and how they interrelate. The far side, the near side acceleration, the DOT has state standards that we have to comply with, is that correct?
Yes.
And are we meeting all of those standards with regard to distance, with regard to number of lanes um and the like?
Yes.
Okay, and they ultimately have jurisdiction and they are the.
Right, I I understand that there's a standard that you have to meet, but my point is is that we can make it better, so maybe we can do better than the standard. And that's I think what we're trying to get at from up here.
Again, it's a s- it, well, I was, I was actually responding to Doctor.
I I have very similar questions.
I didn't, I right, I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you ask a question, but. The reason why I'm bringing it up is they have jurisdiction over the highway. So even if the, even if the planning board wanted something different. We have to follow the DOT regulations, we can't.
Right, but you can ask the DOT to advise you or or to make a change on their policy as well, I mean. That that is within our right as well.
Dan.
Correct.
Would that be something that the DOT would consider? Well, wait till he gets back to the microphone.
So we are exceeding DOT's requirements in terms of driveway location. The drive, the first driveway on thirty-five northbound that's proposed is approximately three hundred fifty feet from where the. Uh far side jug handle is proposed, that's about five hundred feet from the Deal Road intersection. Typically, at signalized intersections on corners, DOT requires a hundred foot separation. From the corner before you can introduce your first driveway. So we're five hundred feet from the intersection, three hundred fifty feet from the far side jug handle. Respectfully, we've not only complied with their standards, but we've heartily exceeded them.
So are you familiar with the jug handle at West Park and thirty-five as well? And what is the, can you tell me the difference between what that proposed jug handle is and what? That ju- what the other one is, cuz I, the conversation we were just having earlier was is that if you go up there at any time, it's a mess. Everything's backing into everything, so I guess my question is with this, you know, the standards as they relate to jug handles. You know, is there math that you have to follow that says that there'll be seventy cars in that jug handle X amount of time or? Because i- if if what we're seeing north of this intersection is gonna happen here, I think that's our concern, or at least. I I might misrepresenting you here, doctor, but I, you know, I think that is, I think that's our concern about that. You know, we see this happening just one intersection north of this, and so while we have you here, I I I, my degree is in international relations. I don't know jack squat about trying to create traffic, uh better traffic, that's why we have experts like you, so while we have you here. You know, can can, we're trying to make this better and that's think that's what we're trying to get.
Just one question.
Sure.
Having grown up and lived here my entire life and been in these intersections and watching them change. What is, which portion of are you talking about because, but let me just finish the question because. The way ours is, we have a near side. Then the road and then a far side, West Park Avenue heading north doesn't have the near side jug handle that you're talking about. So it's not really the same.
I'm talking about if you're heading north, if you're going uh north on thirty-five. And then you wanna, where was that pizza place that just went out of business on the corner, that jug handle is what I'm talking about there.
The ju- so the ju- and I just want Dan to make sure he understands the question, so. What you're talking about is the backup in the jug handle trying to merge in to head westerly.
Correct.
On West Park Avenue.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
It it's not Doctor Di Benedetto's question with regard to the merge from the near side into the site or crossing over, it's an entirely different question.
Okay, well, except for, except for one thing, West Park Avenue, you've got town shops there on the corner. There's a lot of traffic that pulls out into that right hand shoulder.
Right.
East side shoulder that now tries to get into thirty-five, so i- in a sense, creates a situation very similar to the, to what Doctor Di Benedetto was talking about. They're trying to get out of the sh- right hand shoulder and and merge left into the northbound stream. And other cars are coming out of the northbound stream and trying to get right into the into the jug handle.
Just to, just, but Bill, in in that scenario, the timing of the. The a- and I guess I'll ask my expert, does the timing of the of the signal. Take into account cars coming in and out of shopping centers or it only takes into account the jug handles and the infrastructure?
The latter, but again, where we differ and I'm I'm not gonna. Tell you, I know everything about the West Park Avenue intersection.
I'm I'm just trying to get a reference.
Yep.
Here's what I'm trying to do.
And I know that intersection and those jug handles, they existed seventeen years ago when I was here for the stop and shop application. So I'm sure that intersection was done a long, long time ago. The jug handle that we're proposing is in keeping with current. Design standards as it relates to jug handle design, both in terms of its length, its radii, its location and its operation. So um where we differ is with the eastbound far side jug handle. We have a long and we're making it longer acceleration lane. Whereas I don't think that exists from what Mister Fitzgerald was laying forth in terms of the shopping center. And the far side jug handle at West Park in the northbound direction. So you have a lot, again, I'm gonna use the word friction, you have a lot of friction cuz of that shopping center. And that far side jug handle occurring in a very short distance, we don't have that situation here. Our far side jug handle coming eastbound that exists today. We're lengthening the acceleration lane, making it easier and giving people more time to merge over. And we have a new modern designed jug handle that's proposed. That is in concert and keeping with current design standard.
But Dan, also for tho- for the backup that I think Mister Duffy was talking about. Is coming off of the far side jug handle trying to head west on West Park Avenue.
Yes.
It a different scenario because as you cross the highway heading west. You have additional friction of turning into Starbucks or right after that going into another jug handle to head. Southbound on Route thirty-five and then the straight lane, so would, what's happening with what we're proposing. By way of the dedicated lanes and and helping the flow go through the intersection. Does the West Park Avenue intersection have that same benefit?
It does not, and as it relates to the westbound direction on Deal Road. Anyone that wants to go west through the intersection is gonna be in the through lane heading west in that direction.
I think that I I like to hear that there are three lanes now that you've divided that because obviously that is a problem going westbound. But I I guess now my now, also in my concern is is that. But I I guess now my, now, also in my concern is is that if I understand you correctly, when you do the jug handle. Somebody would be able to go all the way across those lanes and try to make the left-hand turn.
If they wanted to make a U-turn, yes.
And that was the question, Mr. Duffy, that we had talked about when I asked about the frequency based on the fact that.
No, no, I under- I understand the frequency, but it only takes one idiot to screw up everything. So, especially when it comes to traffic, so. Has, so DOT is allowing it or I I just think it's a huge mistake to try to let somebody. If you're gonna control the traffic there, then let's control the traffic and not allow them. Because I'll go back to my West Park example again, I believe part of the issues that we have are people coming out of that shopping center trying to make left hands across. Similar to what you're, what you're fixing at Deal Road, which I appreciate, thank you, about people only being able to make the right-hand turn on the. When they come back across, the same thing happens up at West Park where you've got one person who will scoot themselves out. They'll block traffic, they'll block it both ways there. Um, and I just wanna make sure that. If they're gonna take the jug handle, that they're either going straight or they're gonna make the right, and I understand, you know. I understand it might be allowed, but it just, I I, it just is nonsensical.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with John on that. I was, I was thinking the same thing. You wanna prohibit the left-hand turn, right?
Yeah, I just think trying to have somebody try to come all the way across that is.
Yeah, espe- especially if it's a statistical aberration, right?
Right, and I understand it might happen once in a blue moon, but once in a blue moon on a Thursday at five PM. Uh, in July is a problem.
Sorry, but I. I I wanna come back to this question about the frequency of of that northbound U-turn to the southbound. Because we're talking about all these, you know, pass-by trips, but if I'm driving up thirty-five and say I'm coming from Neptune. And I wanna go to the Kohl's or to the Wendy's, like, or or. You know, or to the, well, no, we're, we're past the layer. But if I wanna go to anything in the shopping plaza and I'm not from Ocean and I'm not taking local roads and I'm coming from the south. How else am I going to get there other than making that U-turn?
You, you would come across Deal Road and and make a left turn in.
And and did you look at what the backup to that would be if you're taking, if you're removing that U-turn option? And then all that traffic is now being funneled around and coming across westbound on Deal. Trying to make the left into that, there's the one driveway into that plaza there?
Yes. So, I hear what you're saying. And and respectfully, it's gonna be DOT's call. So I can't sit here and and commit to you that, yes, we're gonna prohibit anybody using that far side jug handle and make U-turns. I think you always have to look at ramifications in terms of doing something like that, and you raise a good question. If you don't give the people an option to make, use this intersection for a U-turn maneuver. They're gonna do things that are even whackier. Than if they were to use the far side jug handle and come over to the left turn lane. That's always what we grapple with as traffic engineers. And our, our profession is empirically based, it's based on human nature. You can design for the ninety-nine percent of the people that are gonna abide by traffic regulations. And what the intended design is for. You can never fix the one percent that are gonna do something silly. So I rather, again respectfully, design for most of the people that are gonna abide by what the design intention is. Rather than try to design to prevent the one pers- uh, one percent from doing something stupid. So when I look at this in totality, I think what we're proposing is is adequate and perfectly appropriate. Given the context of the area.
The, the jug handle that's being proposed, is that from DOT or from your application?
It's actually set forth by your ordinance for development of this particular parcel.
That there, that there would be a jug handle in any development on this corner. The size of it, the design of it, I believe the testimony was, is per current DOT standards.
So let me just ask you a question, you're a traffic guy again. If there was no jug handle here, what would, what would, what would be, what would happen? Where, where, where are the disadvantages of not having that jug handle is what I would like to know from you.
We're back to the existing condition with all of the friction that I went through as part of my testimony. So you're gonna continue to have people come off the near side jug handle. And if the lane next to the double yellow is full, they're gonna try to cut in and hang out in the middle. You're gonna have people swing wide out of that near side jug handle and try to get around.
That's only because that road is there, that slip road that comes out there where you would make a right. Turn onto, onto Deal Road going east. If you were prohibited to making a left there. Correct, that would stop that, yes?
Yes. But you wouldn't have the ability to accommodate anybody heading northbound? Wanting to go westbound on Deal Road at this intersection anymore. That's the only way you can get westbound on Deal Road.
I don't necessarily agree with that, but that's okay. I mean, you could say that, but I don't think that that's it. You would just deter that from occurring. They could get onto Deal Road, they could get, well, they could get into that area a different way. There's lots of ways in Ocean Township. There's lots of new roads and stuff, there's lots of ways to get there.
No, 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 but what he, a- and just so I make sure that, what he's saying is, if you couldn't make the left turn from that slip lane. Then you couldn't go directly from Route thirty-five onto Deal Road West. So if I lived in off Poplar, if I, I'd have to find another way to go.
Well, you could, you could cut into your property and come around that way. You're right in, right out. And then you would have that jug handle and we would have that left-hand turn and you'd eliminate a lot of those problems that I see is gonna occur.
But you're saying effectively use the site as a jug handle?
They would use it anyway. I, I mean, we're talking about the people here in town, that that's gonna happen. Just like that road became very popular behind.
Understood, and but just so you know, Dr. Di Benedetto, if, if we were to propose to not construct that jug handle. We would need a variance from the board, I mean, it's a, it's an ordinance requirement.
So that's why I was trying to find out, who, who put the jug handle in? Great.
I have one, just one quick question.
Please.
I'm more of a visual person and I'm really stuck on this acceleration lane. Is there a way you can show the entrance on thirty-five to this property? Versus the acceleration lane? All I, uh, what I'm concerned about is that cars are gonna be flying trying to get up on thirty-five and people are gonna try and turn right.
Here it is right now.
Yeah, I know what, I understand, I just wanna see the footage of how close I would talk.
They should have had all this drawn out.
I've never used the decree like Dan, like, that's why I'm laughing.
We're at that one.
No, I'm like you, I was like, I'm, I'm very visual.
Is that working? Yeah, okay.
So Ms. Close, you were asking where the acceleration lane is in relation to the far side jug handle.
On thirty-five.
On thirty-five. So Dan is not gonna go with technology, he's gonna point to it.
No, it's just really hard to see. No, that's the limit of the uh, the figure. It doesn't go uh, any further south.
Oh, you wanna look at the boat? Dan, go back one.
Yeah, that, that's at a scale that's gonna be really hard to discuss, but. Uh, wrong way.
He's lost control.
Yeah, I thought it was left and right.
It just was kept going right, right? Keep going, the one, that one. Keep going, heavily blown up, there you go, yep.
Alright, referring to the exhibit that's on the screen, um, and it's, it's essentially an aerial overlay of the proposed development.
Uh, Ms. Kupka, what exhibit number is that?
This is part of, this is one of sheet fifty-four, it looks like. From the PowerPoint exhibit that was moved in, uh, that was introduced at the original hearing.
So that's a civil engineering.
Correct.
So here's our proposed far side jug handle. Here's Deal Road, Route thirty-five. Here's the far side jug handle that's clipped off at the bottom of the page, but that comes around. And at this point is the stop bar on Route thirty-five to head northbound. So as you come across thirty-five heading north, you'll pass the far side jug handle in an acceleration lane. And at some point south of the pr- I, no. At some point south of our proposed driveway, right-in, right-out driveway on Route thirty-five. That decel- or excuse me, acceleration lane will end and you will merge over to the Route thirty-five through lane. So you're past the far side jug handle and you're before the right-in, right-out driveway that's proposed.
They're already in the two lanes.
To head north.
Prior to the driveway.
Correct.
Drive entrance.
I'm sorry, um, so looking, you, you don't show it, I would have loved to seen the near side.
Just go back one, it's not the scale, but it, they can get the, you can get the.
Because, right now, if you come, if you're, um. I'm just getting my bearings, if you're going uh, east on Deal Road to go north on thirty-five. You only have not even, I would say fifty, seventy-five feet to merge to get into uh, onto thirty-five north. So are you saying that you're extending that jug handle down further south? So you can, there's more room to merge onto thirty-five north?
No, we're extending.
Four hundred, five hundred feet?
We're extending the acceleration lane from that jug handle today. Where it ends today, further north on thirty-five.
So instead of seventy-five feet?
That's the four hundred feet you're referring to.
Correct.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the, you were extending the jug handle to go north.
No.
Because there's, there's, it's, that's very tight. Now I understand what you were saying, doctor. Because if it was down further south, then there's room for to merge.
So we were trying to figure out in town, where do we have a double jug handle? And we do have one in, on West Park Avenue, traveling southbound. And, and the way it works is because there's a long entrance to getting onto the far side jug handle. Past McDonald's, past that even before where BJ's is, and it works because the merge is not against each other really quick.
Dan, I believe it's your testimony that based on the extension of that acceleration lane and where it ends. The, the merge is not gonna have a conflict here either.
Correct.
So, well, here's my question. Since we're getting rid of the, the slip, if you're going uh, to Deal Road where you can make the left. Uh, going west on Deal Road, can you extend that jug handle? So if I'm coming east on Deal Road and I wanna get onto thirty-five north. Can you bring that down lower?
We don't own that property, Mrs.
Oh, that's not part of it, but there, it's part of the slip road.
No, everything, everything that we're proposing by way of the improvements.
Is.
I- is on our frontage or on, what, what we're effectively doing in, in the board, the project engineer testified. The area where the far side jug handle is proposed now is actually part of our lot. And we're going to construct that jug handle and then dedicate it to the DOT.
So what's gonna happen to that slip road?
The slip road is on the other side, we're not doing anything with the slip road.
So that's still gonna be there.
That slip road will be there, they just will not have the ability to make the left turn, right? Right, is that correct, Dan? We're not proposing any changes to the slip road um, geometry?
In terms of the near side jug handle heading north, we are proposing to change the geometry. So that it only allows right turns onto Deal Road.
Right, but we're not, correct, and that's what I said, so.
So, is it possible to move the entrance to the new jug handle further north on your site?
It's possible, but it's not necessary because we meet all of DOT's design standards.
But putting aside DOT design standards as an ex- as the expert traffic engineer. Do you believe that the way the configuration is proposed is safe?
Yes, without question.
Um, can I ask some questions on a different note? So, um, did you have more you wanna say about this, or?
I just wanna clarify something, so. And it's hard because of the line work on the aerial. We are proposing to extend the acceleration lane off the eastbound near side jug handle further north. So it will extend across our right-in, right-out driveway and then taper back. Before you get to the right-out only driveway that's proposed on thirty-five north.
So the acceleration lane is going to be in the way of the entrance way of the site?
It's not gonna be in the way. It's going to.
It's going to be there and if people are in thirty-five going north. And here's the acceleration lane and they wanna turn right into this property. They really gonna have to be careful because they've got people speeding up trying to merge on to thirty-five. Is that correct?
It is correct in the sense that people that wanna turn into the site. And people that are coming off that jug handle would be using the same area to either merge on the thirty-five or turn into the site. But again, you have to consider how the traffic signal operates. It's gonna be green to Deal Road, people will come around the jug handle and now they're going to be confronted with thirty-five northbound. The light will be red. So as the light turns green and the standing traffic that's been waiting on thirty-five to proceed through the intersection. Or the traffic that's on the jug handle will be coming together.
So it won't be dissimilar than if I was in the middle or left lane and needed to get over to make a right turn into my destination?
Correct.
On your scenario, you think all the traffic stops at the light. What about all the people merging, making right-hand turn on Deal Road, heading west now that wanna head onto thirty-five north? What about that traffic? What about, so when that light turns red, those people are funneling to make right-hand turns onto, onto this acceleration lane also. And then people wanna get on the jug handle, people wanna get into your site, people wanna go to the hotel. I mean, I, I, and people wanna get onto thirty-five, that's a lot of traffic trying to mix mash in that area. I, I just don't, I don't understand why we can't move. I, I just think there's a problem. It needs to be a little bit more. I like some of the other changes, like the, the dedicated um, lanes on, on uh, Deal Road. I just, I just having a trouble with that jug handle where it's located.
So westbound Deal Road right turns. I can tell you, in terms of the number, that is not that high. That's why the slip ramp was eliminated from the proposal.
I disagree, I recently, you know, I live in Oakhurst now and recently I've seen an increase. And this is just winter time, increase of people making right-hand turn now.
We just.
Five going north.
Respectfully, we just, it counts in January this year, so we, we have the right turn volume, volume quantified.
Nobody used to make that right turn, now that everybody's making that right turn.
Dan, question, what they could also do conceivably is turn right. They could turn. They could turn right into our site and go through the site and go out of our, should they live here. I'm not suggesting that's the turning movement, but there will be cars that will do that as well to avoid the intersection altogether.
People will do that. And some people will come into our site. Probably go to the quick serve restaurant or the convenience store with gas. And bypass the intersection completely to get to thirty-five north. So just by virtue of developing this particular corner. I think you will take some of the traffic away from the intersection, cause people are gonna use the services that are being provided on the site. So. You know, westbound right turns. It's not a lot of. it's not a lot of traffic and it's not going to propose, or pose a problem in terms of people on Route thirty-five northbound either trying to take the far side jug handle or those coming eastbound on.
I'm gonna give my, I'm gonna give my fellow members a chance to rest, let me ask a couple of questions, give you a chance to think this through. Get them again.
Thank you.
No problem, no problem. So, um, we kinda, you kind of, um, zip through the statistics a little quick. And I'm always a statistical, I don't have a lot of faith in the statistics sometimes. So I'm a little curious about, um, in the degrees of confidence or standard deviations that you have with regard to this two hundred cars in an hour and what's the, what's the, what's the statistical variables here? Or, or degrees of freedom or standard deviations that we have going on here?
I don't have that information at my fingertips. I can provide that on another.
I think that'd be important, 'cause if it was something, 'cause you know, you can say those things and if the degrees of confidence are, you know, one standard deviation, that's quite a big miss, right?
But what I can tell you, Mister, is it Weinstein?
Yeah.
Mister Weinstein is, the rates that we used are prescribed by DOT and we have to use them. So we've done exactly what's prescribed in terms of DOT to estimate traffic.
Dan, this board might want you to do a step more than DOT and if I understand Mister Weinstein's question, take a moment, explain where these ITE numbers came from that you're plugging in. They aren't numbers that were just made up. They were based on traffic, cumulative traffic studies throughout the entire nation. Let's talk about where these numbers came from that you plugged in to get your statistics.
So everything we do is empirically based. So we're a little different in terms of engineering specialty. A mechanical engineer can tell you what the volume of a gas is, um, subject to a certain pressure and temperature. Traffic engineers can estimate traffic based on empirical data that's collected across the country. So what we've done in terms of estimating the traffic generated by this proposed development is based on traffic counts that were collected at convenience stores with gas across the country, quick serve restaurants across the country and I, I would note for the board, the way we approached estimating the traffic, we looked at all the individual land uses. In doing that, we've taken a conservative approach because we could have just estimated all the traffic based on a shopping center, which would be inclusive of all the retail uses and a gas station to account for the fueling operation of the convenience store with gas. A hotel and residential. And if we were to take that approach, we would have had less traffic estimated than what we've put forth.
Here's the problem I'm trying to get a better handle on, okay?
Sure.
One is the statistical variability here, okay? Because some of the same statistics were done to figure out the West Park jug handle, which we all know is kind of a little bit of a mess, right? So I'm trying to understand if the statistical analysis of this was similar to that, different than that.
Just, Mister Weinstein, we don't know what statistical analysis was or wasn't relied upon in the seventies when that jug handle was done.
Great, great. So we think, uh, just give me, just find out what it is today and what the.
We don't, we can't find that out. I don't know what they relied upon in the seventies, but what I'm, what I'm saying is so, not by way of comparison because I don't know and I don't think Dan knows what the standards were.
No, I don't care about that. No, I care more about is what the statistical variations are for this one are, right? That's what, do you, do you guys have a sense of what that is, or?
Again, the question, not what happened in the seventies, but if you did a comparison on the statistics used for this study in relationship to West Park?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that I.
Uh, I'm not following. What, what I can do for the board.
I don't understand that either.
In response to your question is, I can tell you, once I look at it, what the standard deviation is of the rates that we use to estimate traffic of this development.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
Some, some reference point here, 'cause, 'cause you know, when you say, when you say two hundred cars in an hour, I don't know if we're flipping a coin and that could be four hundred or we're feeling like that that's probably anywhere, a degree of confidence in one standard deviation between a hundred and ninety or two hundred and ten. If one standard deviation is from zero to four hundred, then we could all raise our hands and say, okay, we've got a problem here 'cause we couldn't deal with four hundred.
I can provide that information to you.
Great.
I have one quick, one last question.
Sure.
Deal Road, you're on Deal Road, you're ready to cross thirty-five?
Wait, which direction is close? And they can't hear you in the background.
Press, press the, uh, the button.
Oh, you gotta hold it.
Can you hear me?
You have to hold it down. Here.
I mean, I can hear you, Bob. Right.
Press the button down.
Deal Road heading west, can you?
It was better before you pushed them up.
Alright.
Here, use mine. Mine, mine works.
Okay, Deal Road heading west, you're at thirty-five intersection. Are you allowed to make it right without waiting for the light to turn?
In terms of right turns on red, yes, you're allowed to make a right on red.
Yeah, that's a problem.
You could do that today. Can you do that today?
Yes.
And that's how it's going to be with this, that's not changing?
Correct.
So you don't consider that a problem with people automatically turning right from Deal Road to go north on thirty-five with this acceleration lane and thirty-five lanes and people turning right?
Not at all, because again, the ninety-nine percent of the public will come to a complete stop at the stop bar on westbound Deal Road, 'cause that's the law. You have to come to a complete stop. They'll make their right turn onto Route thirty-five if it's safe to do so.
Okay.
I'd like to ask you a question or two if I could.
Please, and I'm gonna just continue to hold this mic 'cause I think it's, it's broadcasting a lot better.
Okay, so your testimony before you went through this, uh, morning seven to nine routine, okay, then the afternoon four to six, and then the Saturday eleven to two. And in those corresponding timeframes, there are a hundred and thirty cars, I believe you testified to, a hundred and twenty from four to six and two hundred on Saturday.
But let me just qualify it. That is new traffic to the area.
That was the nature of my question, Dan. Here's the nature of my question because I don't know the nomenclature.
Yep.
You did, 'cause I wrote that down. You indicated it's new traffic. Does that include pass-by traffic, or is that the same thing?
Does not.
So it does not?
Correct.
So, what you're telling me, those numbers, that only includes new traffic, so pass-by traffic in addition to that will yield a larger number?
Will be turning into and out of the driveways of the site. But pass-by traffic doesn't add traffic to the surrounding roads 'cause it's already there.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So if it's already there, that, that's how it has a different category, categorization. But I have another question, uh, relative to Ms. Close's, um, inquiry regarding that acceleration lane that goes up north of the new jug handle and it extends near or into the area where there's an ingress there. Okay, that goes into the Wawa. Is there an egress? Can they, my question is basically, make a long story short, can they exit the development from that area? Can cars head out of that Wawa at that point and enter Route thirty-five and go north?
Yes, there's two.
Okay, so they, there will be outgoing traffic that will cross the acceleration lane?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's one thing and, uh.
But there's another way to get out of the site.
I know, I know, I know.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Then we'll go to another question. On Deal Road, and you could maybe refer on this Ocean Town Center Landscape exhibit because that's what I referred to when I was trying to discern this. On the westbound portion of Deal Road, you indicated that they're going to make a right turn only lane and actually add a third lane, which would be the right turn only lane.
Correct.
Now where does that begin? Does that begin, um, where this road, well, where this road that goes into the, the residential is sort of, though that's right near Logan Road, or does it, or does it begin somewhere in those trees between the two ingress and egress?
If you look up here, they just zoomed in where they see what the thing is.
I can't really see it because the thing's in the way.
Since, for the record, uh, you'd need to identify what exhibit is being referred to now on the screen.
Sheet number three as part of the Civil Engineers PowerPoint.
And again, what exhibit number?
Oh, the actual plans.
Alright, and what exhibit is that?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. Uh, the plan, oh, A-one.
Thank you.
You know, I could just go up to the exhibit. The pointer's not working right now. I thought it was me, but it's not.
That's alright.
So come.
Bingo.
Now, full disclosure, I am colorblind. I suffer from some, some color blindness, so if I start to lose this, you'll know why. But I think I could see this one. Yeah, I could see this one. So this is the intersection of Deal Road, which is running left and right, and Logan Road. So Logan Road comes up to Deal Road today and we're coming in as a fourth leg to that intersection. As you come across Logan Road heading west on Deal Road, you'll proceed through that intersection. In the eastbound direction, we're creating a left turn lane to come into the new connection opposite Logan Road. And once you pass that left turn lane, heading west, there'll be two lanes in the westbound direction. The curb lane continues all the way up to the intersection and converts to the exclusive right turn lane. The lane that's on the inside next to the double yellow will continue all the way up to the intersection. That will become the through lane, which exists today. And then the intersection widens today to create the left turn lane. So as you're coming, so here's the two lanes heading westbound on Deal Road. The lane that's next to the curb, you can stay in that and take it all the way into the exclusive right turn lane that's proposed at the intersection with thirty-five to head north.
So Dan, I misunderstood you then. Okay, I misunderstood you. I thought you guys were gonna cut in a right lane, a new right lane, a third right lane for a right turn only. But what you're doing is you're widening the intersection at Deal Road and Route thirty-five to make it wider to, uh, put in a lane for left turn only. Isn't that correct?
No, that's not, Mister Chairman.
Well, my question then was, if you're making this third lane for right turn only, where does it start?
So if.
As adjacent to your property?
If you follow this pointer right now.
Okay.
That is where essentially your existing curb is on Deal Road.
Right.
Heading west. So as you come today up Deal Road heading west, you have two lanes. You have this lane where now you can either come through the intersection or make a right turn. And you have this lane, which you can either make a left turn or head through the intersection.
Correct.
So along this line and south, nothing's changing physically other than the striping gets changed so that this lane today, which is a left through lane, becomes an exclusive left turn lane. And this lane, which is the curb lane today, you can go through or make a right turn. You'll only be able to make a through in the future. We're pulling back the existing curb to the north, so on the north side of Deal Road in the westbound direction to create additional pavement that basically starts west of the Logan Road intersection and runs all the way to the Route thirty-five.
But that was my question. It's starting west of the Logan Road intersection, but where does it start?
West of Logan Road?
Hundred feet.
A hundred feet.
Oh, are you asking for a distance?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm looking for where it starts.
I'm, I'm sorry.
That was the nature of my whole question.
I misunderstood your question, Mister Chairman. It's about a hundred and fifty feet west of the Logan Road intersection, judging by the stationing on this baseline. So this is a hundred feet, that's two hundred feet. So from the center of the Logan Road intersection, two hundred feet west is where you'll start to pick up the additional lane.
Alright, that's fine. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. Bill, can you just go to this, to the, uh, jug handle? How many feet is when I come off the jug handle? Where I wanna go west? How many feet is from the jug handle to the light on thirty-five? So if I, somebody does wanna come around and make the left-hand turn to go south on thirty-five, how, how many feet do I have to, where I come off the jug handle to where, where the light is?
It's about two hundred and fifty feet from the jug handle to the westbound stop bar.
I believe, Dan, I believe it's almost across from where the existing slip road is, right?
It is, correct.
So just by way of comparison, Mister Santa.
Have you done studies as to determine what at peak hours the projected backup is going to be in that through lane? 'Cause I, I see a problem where somebody coming around that jug handle, they're gonna wanna go straight. They're not gonna wanna go north on thirty-five again. And they're gonna have to get into that center lane if they're not trying to turn left, or at least gonna have to get into the center. And right now at peak hours, that lane backs up quite a distance. So there's, there's gonna be a problem, I, as I see it, with people getting into that center lane. I don't know if you've projected the number of cars that are gonna be back up there at peak hours.
The queuing, so, so during summer months, it queues up. There's no question. The queue's gonna extend past the jug handle. So then it's a question of, is it better to have a far side jug handle with a normal merge? Or a more typical one than to have a near side where people are trying to cut in? In my opinion, having the far side is a lot better. During non-summertimes, like this evening for instance, the, it may queue up past where the jug handle's proposed, 'cause it's essentially aligned opposite the near side jug handle. But that cycle, every time that light turns green, by and large, the queue is cleared. So if somebody's waiting on the jug handle, the light turns green, the queue clears and somebody can emerge into the middle through lane.
Do you know how far back that queue is gonna be at peak hours during, during the offseason, not during the summer?
Uh, it's a few hundred feet if I recall correctly.
So it's gonna be waiting multiple times to get through the light? Is that the?
During summer conditions, yes.
Is there a way, is there a way to change the pitch of how it feeds in to, um, how it feeds into that to minimize that?
It's, you could angle this more so that you're coming in more parallel. I don't like that kind of design, 'cause then somebody's looking over their shoulder back down Deal Road to see when they can merge. So I always opt to have a ninety-degree intersection because it helps with somebody's sightline looking back down Deal Road. That's why it's configured that way. And that was something that DOT suggested.
Okay, but a different pitch would make it go faster, or?
No, I, I, I would, I would, I would submit to you, I think it would be worse because now somebody's looking over their shoulder trying to look to see if it's clear as opposed to having a nice clear sightline.
Okay.
We're going to take a five-minute break at this point. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start the meeting again, please. So we will continue with questions from the board to this particular witness, if there are any. Gentlemen or ladies, proceed.
I have a few more questions. So I was thinking about it. Why can't we just put a left-hand turn signal and, and set it up to eliminate that, uh, the far side jug handle going north onto, uh, thirty-five from Deal Road?
There is a left-hand turn signal.
I think the question is why can't it be transformed like Eaton Town Circle was into a four-lane, a four-leg intersection with typical turning movements and slices of the cycle, making that work as opposed to any jug?
I think the Eaton Town Circle is completely different in terms of context. Those are two highways, thirty-five and thirty-six, as opposed to a state highway and a local road. And, and given, given that, I don't think DOT would entertain that kind of proposal.
I, I just having really hard time grasping this new jug handle and having all this traffic flow there. So I'm coming up with ways or, or different ideas or different thoughts. And that's what I was asking you about before. Like what else can you propose that can make the traffic less in that area? Like what are the other ideas? What are the other concepts?
When you say make the traffic less, you just mean the conflicts in the front of the site on thirty-five?
That's correct.
Alright.
Yeah, I, I think there's gonna be way too much traffic flowing into that. area of maybe four hundred feet we're talking about.
I'm gonna also add to what the doctor said. You can make a left-hand turn onto thirty-five north on West Park. If you're going east on West Park, there's a dedicated left-hand turn signal, so you can get onto thirty-five north. If we could do that on Deal Road that would make it where you, you don't have to go around that jug handle south of that, what do you call that, the far? Um that, well, the jug handle you're proposing, okay. If we just go to Deal Road now and we just came out
Other side, Deal Road.
I'm come, I'm going, I'm going east and I make a left-hand turn onto thirty-five. Well, what I'm getting at is, because what's really bothering, I guess, a lot of us here on the board, is that if I am coming east on Deal Road to go north on thirty-five I'm taking that jug handle. That's a nightmare to merge onto thirty-five north. And I sometimes do not, I'm not able to to merge over past the bus stop, which is pretty much right where your, yours is. So, you have cars coming, going north, and then you have cars trying to take this other jug handle, and it's just too congested. It just doesn't seem like it's gonna work because uh, just for me driving this every day. So, I'm not saying for you to go to the, you know, the DOT, but we would alleviate a lot of that merging going north and then taking the jug handle if we can make a left-hand turn onto thirty-five north. I'm just saying that would alleviate a lot of the issues.
You need to get rid of the near side jug handle is what you're proposing.
Yep.
The one on the bottom.
The one on the bottom.
So so I under-
For what, Bill?
Well, if, if, if what Dan is saying is that this is not ever gonna be a four-leg intersection. Then you need, you need a slip ramp or something to be able to go south on Deal, uh, east on Deal Road. You can't get rid of that part of it.
Right.
But you could get rid of the the, heading west on Deal Road.
Right.
So, just so I understand, you're talking about taking away this far side jug handle? That takes, that takes eastbound Deal Road to thirty-five north. We would love to be able to do that, but we're constrained. You're constrained by development on the northwest corner, the bank, the gas station. You're constrained by development on the southwest corner, which is the shopping center. There's no available right-of-way.
Well, there's a jug handle there.
There's a big jug there, far side jug.
There's no shopping center there, it's just that jug handle.
Yeah, there's a slip jug handle to come down to go thirty-five south.
There's also a, a, a far side jug to come around back to Deal Road East from, uh, southbound Deal Road, uh, southbound thirty-five. There's a big, big circle in there. This is almost gonna be a clover leaf, it's just gonna be missing one leaf.
Yes, I agree with you. So you got the Deal Road, Route thirty-five, you got the slip ramp to go right from Deal Road East South, and then coming south on thirty-five, you have the far side jug to come east on Deal Road.
Correct.
So this whole corner is constrained by this shopping center. You cannot do anything with these jug handles, cause of this shopping center. You can't widen to the north side like we are on our side of Deal Road, on our side of the thirty-five intersection, because you have existing businesses that are right up on the road.
But you have, but you have two lanes there. You have the slip if I wanna go thirty-five south. And then you have two lanes there. Uh, one is to go straight down Deal Road, the other one is to stay to the right, where you could pick up uh, the jug handle to go north, or you could stay to the right and pick up Logan Road.
You're suggesting not widening it, just making one of them a left turn only and one of them a through.
Correct.
Yeah.
Does it even have to be a left turn only?
You could widen it. Just like, just like you're on West Park. Okay, so that's all I'm saying. It's, it's not like we're asking for something that hasn't been done before.
Left turn only would solve the other problems where people are trying to make lefts anyway, when they're not supposed to.
That's right.
Yeah, that's, that's a nightmare too.
That's all, uh, by the way, that's the real problem with all of it.
But I think that would eliminate the merge to go.
Well, I have a question then. How does that avoid the same situation that you're looking to prevent here? And what I mean is, if I'm coming Route thirty-five south and I'm taking the jug handle to go Deal Road East.
Make a left turn.
Right. No, no, no. Off the highway. I'm going around there, and now I'm merging into Deal Road East.
Right.
Yeah.
You go straight.
Correct, but what about, it, it's such a short distance, is there not a concern of people trying to cut across to get into, make that left?
There's two lanes there.
There's two lanes going down to Deal Road.
Right, one to the, right, but how do you get to the left one, is what I'm saying?
Why would you wanna get, you mean to make a U-turn?
No, to go straight. I see what you're saying. But no, that's just a merge. It's the traffic going east isn't the issue off of the thirty-five. Um, I, I just think that if we could get that done, that would alleviate so much, so many issues.
Plus, the other thing he's saying is that, if you eliminate that that jug handle, then you don't find guys ramping up the speed, trying to figure out how to get through there. People making the right-hand turn, people coming out of the Wawa, people coming out of development.
But, I, I think it's a good suggestion, and we're gonna look at it. We'll have Dan, obviously, we can't analyze it off the cuff.
Sure.
He'll look at it based on the numbers, and he'll speak to the DOT with regard to the practicality, if it's something within the confines of their regulations even that they can approve, but I think it's a, certainly is a suggestion worth looking into.
Okay. And, apparently it looks like you're gonna come back.
Yes.
And, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, uh, aside here with Ms. Close and say, I would like to see some visual. I'd like to see the, the three lanes going, uh, west from Logan Road to thirty-five and what that would look like.
Well, you just wanna see an exhibit, so it's great.
Right, I wanna see the jug handles, e- even on the south, you know, south of, uh, of, uh, Deal Road, just so we could see everything visually.
Showing the entire intersection, including all the jug handles, all the way back east to where the third, the right turn lane starts.
Right, because I
And the acceleration lane too.
You got it.
Hang it to right.
Yes, we'll do that.
It's a major concern coming right now, off of, if, if I'm going east on, on Deal Road to go thirty-five north, and then the traffic coming in to take that jug handle, the new one that you're proposing. I just, there's, there's not enough room for um, the cars to merge onto thirty-five as the cars are trying to merge into that new jug handle. I just don't think there's enough space right there.
We'll have a blown up.
So I'd like to see that.
Ms. Krimko, are you, um, planning to have a tech review meeting with Mr. Fitzgerald on this?
I, I don't know if Mr. Fitzgerald is suj-, he, Sandy wants to know if we wanna have a tech review meeting to go over this.
Well, what I, what I, I'm fine with that concept, what I would ask, if it's not too much, if there's going to be exhibits and there're gonna be things that'll be shown on the screen, et cetera. If, if they could be in ten days before the hearing, because I'm sure there's people that are sitting here listening to all this, having the same visualization issues as the board.
Ms. Krimko, specifically for that.
Cold at a meeting if, if they go to town hall ten days before, wanna look at it and, and understand it and ask the questions that they wanna ask.
That's no prob-, I mean, obviously, the reason we couldn't do everything ten days in advance last time, cause we had the meetings week after week and then another week, so we'll be happy to do that.
We still have twenty minutes here, but, uh, that raises the point of when this application will be heard next, and it will be on the regular meeting list for April fifteenth, is that correct?
Twenty-second, I believe.
Twenty-second.
We have, uh, on our agenda for today, uh, there's a Germans to April fifteenth.
Fourth Monday, right? Twenty-second.
Unless it's got changed to the fourth Monday, it's the twenty-second.
We moved for Easter, that's.
Yeah, right. So it is the fifteenth.
It is the fifteenth, okay.
Okay, with no further notice.
That's correct. Uh, I, we're a little bit advanced of, uh, the end of the meeting, but, uh, we're gonna formalize, uh, uh, the schedule. So, without additional, uh, notice, uh, at ten o'clock today, we'll stop. Ten o'clock this, twenty minutes from now, and then, uh, this will be on the calendar for the fifteenth. And just as we said for the last meeting, there may be other applications on the list, and we'll have to see where this fits in.
April twenty-second is Easter. The day after Easter, I think.
Easter Monday.
Yes, uh, Monday, the fifteenth. And for those who didn't hear, i- it's, it's odd, because we usually meet on other Mondays, but it's because of Easter. Uh, yes, it's Tax Day. Uh, and, uh, for those who may not have heard it in the back, uh, Ms. Krimko has stipulated that any exhibits that she's planning to have her traffic expert rely upon will be on file at least ten days in advance, as per Mr. Fitzgerald's suggestion. And, uh, again, Bill, in terms of, uh, tech review, uh, any other thoughts?
I, I, I could do a tech review or not. I mean, I, I think Dan really needs to look at, at available right-of-way geometry, DOT requirements, maybe talk. Uh, I'm kinda thinking that if there's gonna be a tech review, it might be after they find out, it could be, could be less than ten days before the meeting, and I, I would have no problem with it, but.
I'll have should Dan have something he wants to run by Bill and get Bill's input, I'll have Dan reach out directly to Bill. Any other questions for Dan?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I have one last question. Um, before our break, uh, the chairman asked a question about getting onto thirty-five from the Wawa and where that was in terms of the acceleration lane. So, I, I, I'm looking at the, the aerial view, um, I think that one. And, and just so, just let me walk through this. I, I'm at the Wawa. I then, if I wanna get onto thirty-five north, the, the path of least resistance for me is not to, you can't get onto thirty-five. You have to go out to Road A, make a left, come to, I'm, I'm gonna guess that's a stop sign there, and then make a right-hand turn onto thirty-five. And where is that in terms of the acceleration lane?
The acceleration lane ends beyond that exit onto thirty-five.
So I'm, I'm gonna be making a right-hand turn from a stop into the acceleration lane.
Correct, or into the through lane on Route thirty-five.
Dan, how is it, does, I understand that this is a new development and the board is asking great questions, and you know, we're gonna have the exhibit like you asked to show, but normally for those properties up and down Route thirty-five and any highway, I mean, isn't this a pretty common scenario?
Yes.
Where you're either turning, there isn't an acceleration lane, so you're turning into full-speed traffic lane.
Correct.
So certainly, turning into an acceleration lane where the cars have not yet reached their full acceleration is a much better situation than some of the turns you'd be making into a highway, out of a retail center that's right into traffic going the full fifty-five or sixty miles an hour.
Yes.
I understand that, but those have already been developed, and this is a new development, so, like I said, we're trying to make it better.
Which I opened with, but I just, I, there's a lot being said about the acceleration lane, and remember, the acceleration lane, you're not at your full speed yet.
No, but there's also people decelerating potentially in front of you as you're, I think that's the conflict that the board is concerned.
Why not, why not make the, that's, or whatever lane you wanna call it, which is basically, it's a shoulder, right? You're, you're making this, acceleration lane is the shoulder of thirty-five, is that correct?
For all intents and purposes, yes.
Why can't the shoulder be extended past your development?
It is.
It is, so your, your acceleration lane or whatever is past, pa-, even past the, the hotel?
Yes, what happens is, the striping of that shoulder area as a lane transitions after the first driveway into a shoulder. So you have a formal acceleration lane with dash white line. At some point, it transitions you over, and at that point where it transitions further north along the site frontage is a shoulder.
I'm, I'm suggesting clearing it out all the way to the end of your property.
And create the acceleration lane?
Third lane for the whole way.
Meaning they extend the acceleration lane all the way to the end of our property and not transition to the end of our property?
That's something we can discuss with DOT. Then it's almost, you can consider that in, in traffic engineering parlance. It's an auxiliary lane at that point. That would transition to a shoulder.
So it's something we'll look at.
Absolutely.
I had another question, I'm sorry. Uh, so, on Deal Road, so we've spent a lot of time at thirty-five and Deal, in that intersection, so can I, can we transfer our attention to the, the Logan Road area over there? So, I guess my question is, on, on the queuing of cars that are gonna be on Road B, I guess that is. Alright, so a lot of people go to Wawa Chick-fil-A, they're now gonna wanna make a left-hand turn onto Deal Road coming out of Road B at that new intersection that's been nicely cleaned up, so now it's a four-way stop. So, uh, do you have any idea of how how much, cause you're talking about people going into the, into the, uh, library on a right, like, I guess, is it gonna go are, are you expecting it to queue up a lot there? Or is it, um or are you expecting people to clear out of that area? Cause I guess my concern is, is that as you start to push back, especially during the summer, is there any concern of that whole area, that Road B area of like, filling up with cars?
No, sir.
No, okay. And that would be an extreme circumstance in order for that to, to happen. There would have to be a lot of cars to come through there.
Correct, and there'd have to be a desire for development traffic to go that way.
Okay, so you think, so that you think the majority of the people are gonna come out and make that left to go, because there is the light there then?
Correct, but the majority of the traffic that's gonna be generated by this development is gonna be oriented to the thirty-five corridor. Particularly cause of the convenience store with the gas and the quick-serve restaurant. They are forward-facing the thirty-five corridor for a reason, because they're gonna draw most of their business from the traffic that's already on thirty-five.
And then, the second question I had was, on the very detailed map that we were showing before, I'm sorry to do this to you.
Uh, the, the one that was on the plans, uh, where you had the lanes, um, if you could go back to that, that part where, uh, at Logan Road, um, I just wanna ask. Just bear with us for one second.
Yes, yeah, if you could go to the Logan Road
Yeah.
thing. So when you're talking about adding a left turn lane into your site, so you're going, uh, eastbound on Deal Road, you cross thirty-five, yes. So, one of the issues that we have on the other side of the intersection, um, so, we're talking over by the Wells Fargo areas where you start to have all these lanes that end up coming out, are it, I, I, I'm assuming it's to standard, but my concern is, is that you're gonna have backup of the queuing of people trying to make the left, cause we would hope that people would wanna come in and use the, 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 the development here. So, during the summer, and I, and I know we're talking about summer, not peak, but I'm gonna go to the worst scenario. I'm going to it Thursday, July fifteenth at five P M, okay? That is just craziness as it relates now. So my concern is, I like that you're, like I said, that you're making it, I think you're gonna ease traffic that way. But now my concern is, is that, are you now gonna back traffic up with the left-hand turn lane? So now you've backed traffic up into the, the, into Route thirty, in, back more into the other intersection. Cause on, on a wor-, on the worst day that that can happen, I mean, let's be realistic, traffic can go from thirty-five to Whale Pond like we've discussed. Um, but also, you know, my concern is, is that you're, now you're gonna jam it the other way. Do you get what I'm saying?
I do, and, and, and the Logan Road access, that's gonna be the secondary access to the development. There is absolutely no question in my mind that the thirty-five driveways are gonna accommodate most of the entering traffic.
Okay.
I do not envision any issues with respect to that left turn off of Deal at the Logan Road intersection into the development.
Alright.
So, so getting back to what you were saying, why can't you make, is there two lanes left, uh, north of this left turn? New design, or is that a single lane?
It's, as you come west through the intersection of Logan, it's a single lane, and then once you get past the eastbound left turn lane, it opens up to two lanes.
So would it be difficult to, to have a two-lane there? After the intersection?
There, there's really no need to have two lanes that far back, but
I'm suggesting is, then you, you may be able to make that left-hand turn lane longer.
We can, so, what I would suggest to you is as currently designed to leave it, and if there is an issue in the future, which I don't anticipate there would be, but if there were, you could certainly extend that striping.
Stripe it?
Yep, and re-stripe it to extend the left turn lane. You would be taking up some of, uh, the lane, the two lanes heading You would be taking up some of, uh, the lane, the two lanes heading westbound. But it's a striping change, it doesn't involve any widening to make that change.
But that entrance that we're talking about, is also probably the main entrance for the townhomes? The seventy-two townhomes or whatever?
Agreed.
Right?
Yes.
So, I mean, there is gonna be traffic coming in and out of there just for that.
Agreed.
Right?
But again, if you've been down Dwight Drive, they have a little over seventy homes along Dwight Drive? That, I would liken that street, forget summertime conditions, cuz I know there's a cut-through traffic issue with Dwight Drive, I understand that. If you go out there today and drive up and down Dwight Drive? That's about the sense of the amount and magnitude of traffic that the townhomes would generate. Cuz there's seventy townhomes, there's about seventy-three or so single-family homes along Dwight Drive. And I only submit that to you, just to give you a comparison.
But the same scenario, if you will, like with Deal Road, summertime, somebody trying to take a left into the, into their development? I mean, that's what, I, I think he was going, but now add on top of the commercial part of it, you're adding, you gotta consider the townhomes.
I agree with you. And, and because most of the commercial traffic is gonna be oriented to the Route thirty-five corridor? The townhouse traffic making that left turn is not gonna be that much.
Dan, taking away the comparison, cuz a lot of the Dwight Drive neighborhood is a summer neighborhood? So, taking that aside by way of comparison? The actual numbers that are anticipated to be generated during the peak hour? That would be, let's say, Th- a Thursday night at five o'clock? How many cars would you be expecting to go in there for the townhome?
So the seventy townhouses for weekday evening peak hour? So one hour betw- the highest hour between four and six on the weekday? Eleven vehicles would come in, and six vehicles would go out, for a total of seventeen two-way trips for the townhouses.
How is that number even make any sense when you've got seventy townhouses?
Because not everyone leaves work at the same time and comes, comes home at the same time.
You would want the majority to have a nine-to-five type scenario, right?
Not necessarily, no.
How, how long is that left-hand turn, uh, lane? How many cars can you fit in that left turn lane?
It's about a hundred and fifty feet long, and that would accommodate about six to seven vehicles.
Is there a left-hand turn only s- signal there too? So if that light, when they come to the light at Logan, will they?
We haven't finalized that design, but I would anticipate there would be a left turn arrow.
Yeah, I guess, a- and as it relates to timing? I'm assuming the DOT then would time the new light at thirty-five and the new light at Logan? To ca- cuz, my, once again, going back to the worst case, well, that's why I'm asking.
You can't make that assumption, and I wouldn't tell you that I can make that assumption.
Would you make that a part of your application to the DOT, that they would redo the, redo the controls?
So, s- the answer is yes.
Okay.
And what we've asked for? And we haven't done it formally yet? Um, but it just came up this past week when we got the review letter? Something came to mind. They're not gonna allow us to connect the Logan Road signal physically to the Route thirty-five signal. They just don't allow that. However? We're gonna explore with them if we would be allowed, as part of the improvements to the thirty-five intersection? To put in what's called a GPS clock? And what a GPS clock does, it's based on GPS system, it keeps the time of day. We would also look to put in a GPS clock at the Logan Road traffic signal? So that we know both of those traffic signals, in terms of the time of day that they're operating on, are exactly the same.
Uh, and-
And then we can time the Logan Road intersection? So that it works well with the thirty-five intersection without connecting them.
So the, so the, so the GPS essentially syncs them up in some degree related to time?
Correct.
So they're all both operating at five P M?
Correct.
And then after that, then the DOT can then say, okay, I, I'm gonna operate one this way and this way? Add a certain ti- a trigger of, of a certain time?
DOT is gonna say, we're gonna operate the thirty-five signal this way?
Right.
And we, representing the applicant, but by extension the township, cuz it's a township traffic signal? Are gonna say, okay, given how thirty-five is working, as prescribed by DOT? This is the best way to set up Logan Road, so that it works well with thirty-five. In the old days, you can connect hardwire, and then they communicate directly with each other, but DOT doesn't allow that. But again, if DOT says no to putting in a GPS clock to the thirty-five traffic signal? Then, we're not gonna do it to Logan Road.
Our elected officials need to do a better job if DOT says no, so.
I agree with you.
Any more questions from the board? This juncture, I would ask that, he's done with his testimony, correct?
Yeah.
This juncture, I would ask if, uh, somebody would-
Make a motion?
Motion to conclude the meeting?
Sure, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
See you back here, April?
April fifteenth.
The hearing starts at, uh, seven-thirty in general.